Could you please bow your heads, Lord, how wonderfully blessed and thankful we are that you've allowed us together, Lord. We ask you now, in the name of Jesus, that you would bless the city of Shreveport. And all its citizens, oh God, please bless and keep our mayor and all the officials. Help us, Lord, as we go forward to make the right decisions concerning the citizens of Shreveport. We pray in the prayer of the name of Jesus, our Christ. Amen.
I believe this is the life of the United States of America, a true republic, which stands on my nation under God, in the vision of the Constitution of justice for all.
Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comment on an application, we have comments slipped at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out the slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order, and hear first the MPC staff case manager, then from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing these comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to District Court. All ZBA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either District Court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you're concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway of this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The zoning board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Okay, do we... Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, what do I hear?
I hear that Ms. Pearson.
It's been moved by Ms. Pearson. Second by Mr. Berry. Let us vote.
Mr. Chairman, you may have to do a hand vote at this time, and you will give us five additional minutes after that to allow Ms. Daniel to properly load the system for your votes.
Okay. But it'd be helpful if we went out of order to get it on the computer.
It's not gonna take her that long. If you just do your hand vote on this one, then we can go now.
Okay. Okay, the motion carries. The first case on the agenda is case number 20-20BAC, variance.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ben Moller. I'm the planner that's been working this case with Metropolitan Planning Commission. As stated, this is case 20-20BAC. The applicant is Jessica Akbarian Tofagi, and the location is 755 Ontario Street. The request is a variance to maximum fence height, and the proposed use is a single-family residential home. The applicant is requesting a variance to the maximum fence height permitted in the corner side of a residential property. They are proposing a six-foot brick fence, and this would be a three-foot variance to the... Or a three-foot height variance to the three-foot maximum in the district. In our research, when it comes to looking at things like hardship and impact statement, we did find that denial of this request is warranted due to the lack of hardship found in the site, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have with this.
Could you give us briefly an explanation of the 50 percent fence or open rule?
Absolutely. So with it, when looking at the fence, there is the possibility that there can be openings in it. I know when we were doing research of the surrounding areas, as well as the surrounding fences on the site, we did find one on the interior side facing towards the neighbor. When looking at that one specifically, which is an existing brick fence, you will see that there are openings within that. It was discussed amongst our staff that there could be a possibility that they do translate that kind of fence over to the other side, and when looking at something like that, it was found that our staff would accept something like a drawing of that, where we would have to basically do hand calculations to see if there is a 50 percent opening, where out of 100 percent of the fence, 50 percent of it is solid screening, there are no openings, whereas the other 50 percent can be opening with the fence, which would fall within the allowable uses of the fence for the district. They might be able to give a better explanation than I did, but I believe that is kind of the going way with that for the office.
Thank you.
I think you've done it quite well, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone speaking for?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hassan Akbarian Tofagi. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Jessica.
Sir.
We live at 755 Ontario Street.
Could you pull your microphone toward you?
How does this say?
Perfect, thank you.
My understanding from the ZBA staff report, paragraphs four, five, and six on page two, is that there are two complaints they have about our request. Number one is that we didn't specify our hardship enough. Number two is that the fence, the brick wall fence, would not match the characteristics of the neighborhood. I want to read the statement that we sent to the staff to state our hardship, and then I wanted to share some of these pictures. I have a map of the property on there while I read the statement, if you don't mind. So, "To shield my bedroom's windows and walls facing Line Avenue, mainly for the safety of my three- and five-year-old boys, who sleep every night less than 40 feet from this Shreveport main doorway, I would like to build a six-foot tall brick wall stretching 36 feet. This wall will complement an iron fence, the open iron fence, not the brick wall, we run 32 feet near the sidewalk, and we allow appropriate side triangle, as it's shown up there, for the drivers turning from Line Avenue onto Ontario Street and vice versa." The list of the hardship is below. Number one, "Within the last four years that we have resided in this location, there have been at least three car accidents where the drivers have lost control and exited the road, colliding with these structures or people on Line Avenue, including the bringing down of two utility poles and the pedestrians' loss of life. Unfortunately, late on weekend nights, I have noticed several episodes of illegal drag racing on Line Avenue near where my property is located. The brick wall will keep vehicles from entering the house through the large windows should they lose control." Number two, "There have been several episodes of shooting in South Island recently, close to the location of my property. A solid wall will reduce the chance of loose bullets flying through the windows of my kids' bedrooms." And this might sound odd, but I unfortunately see similar cases in the hospital more often than I would like to. Number three, "Brick wall will reduce the road noise, and open fence would not allow for that." Number four, "Brick wall will hide the view of my children's bedroom window so that they can leave their blinds open and enjoy natural light. Currently, this is very difficult to do when I find empty bottles of hard liquor sitting against their bedroom wall every week. Incidents of this have unfortunately increased in the recent months since they have designated a bus stop around the corner. The proposed wall will not extend beyond the front of the house and will stop short of obstructing the side triangle." Please see the attachment up here. "There are no public health and concerns, health concerns that I am aware of, and I don't think the ZBA staff had found any of that. The wall will be aligned with the existing brick wall in the adjacent property, but it will be shorter," and that's a solid brick wall that the neighbor has behind us on Line Avenue. "It will be shorter in height and will be built beautifully to match the existing wall, as the staff reports, on the other side of our property. I have not limited the budget for this project to ensure attractiveness. Please note that my house is not located in the historic South Island District. It's not in the historic district. It's across the street. But I have designed the fence and wall so that they will not deteriorate over the last two decades, unlike many other similar structures that have been built in the past along the Line Avenue." I have a few more pictures, if you have a few minutes to bear with me. So this is the side triangle. This is the property, and this is the brick wall we are talking about. This is where the kids sleep, and this is where my bedroom is. So this is the only stretch we are talking about, and the rest of this will be an open fence. So I think we do not have any issues with that. We already have a permit for three-foot wall here, and we would like to make this stretch to be six-foot. And it shows that it's way off the sidewalk. It's not sitting on the sidewalk. Let's see here. So this is the wall that I've already built without the filling in the bricks, and this is the view when you turn from Ontario on Line Avenue. And you can see some of those brick walls back there, but there's obviously no obstruction of the view if you make the full stop, and there's no red lights at this intersection. So you can see that. You can see all the way down when you turn, and the other way around as well. This is looking through the wall at night if you have an iron fence, and this is how much you can see inside of the house. And I have a better picture of that, actually. So this is what we currently have. We are proposing that we would like to build this up with solid bricks. They say this is not characteristic of the neighborhood. Some of my neighbors have other types of fence, and these are examples of that. These are probably 20 feet above Line Avenue, and they don't respect the triangle side. I understand they've been grandfathered in, but usually if people have left a short wall, they've filled up the rest with privacy fence. I don't think that's attractive. As opposed to... This is another example of a neighbor's fence that is right on the sidewalk. Ours is way off the sidewalk. And this is right across the... It's a wood fence. It's eight feet tall. I don't think it looks attractive. This is a solid brick wall across the street for one of my neighbors on Line Avenue, on a really catty corner from my property. Same thing here, a solid brick wall. All of these are about 12, 14 feet above the Line Avenue. This is the one that is lining up with my property. My property will be this way, but that is much taller than my brick wall. This is another one. I really took these pictures walking five minutes around the property, all on Line Avenue. This is probably about 40 feet tall. Some of the commercial properties, solid brick wall, and I think it's beautiful. This is AT&amp;T Building. That's the fire station. This is the AT&amp;T Building, and this one doesn't respect the triangle of sight, but I don't think it looks unattractive. This is by Betty Virginia Park, eight to 10 feet tall. This is the senior housing. They have built column bricks, but they have wood to fill it in, and that deteriorates at once. And just several other examples, really. I think what they're really proposing is that we do something like this, that the wall is short and we fill that, the rest of that with iron fencing. My issue with that is if we did such thing, it will be very easy to see all the way through the house, and it will not give enough protection for the children. I'm requesting that, if you could, please approve this request. Unfortunately, I've been spending more times at work recent, in the last 10 months that I've liked to. I am concerned about the safety of my family. I'm trying to, hopefully, do a good, decent job to respect the neighborhood and also protect it, so that we can build this up to that level, and again, it will not deteriorate. It will not take away from the neighborhood. Just an example of what we are dealing with, the day that it snowed, we lost this tarp that was covering bricks. So if the person that took it had asked me, I would have given it to them, but we have those kind of people just walking off the Line Avenue. And this is the part that I see bottles sitting around the house sometimes. This is the bus stop, and the iron fence will run down here and go out down the Ontario Street. I'm gonna put this sketch back on there. Hopefully, this will make more sense now. This is the triangle of sight. We had somebody look at it. It's respected, and the question is really the height of this brick wall. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I hope that we made the case, and I hope that we are granted the permit.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jack Berry Antifagi, do you have a picture or a drawing of the design, or if you could put the picture back up of the columns, do you propose to just bring the brick up as it is at the bottom, just all the way up?
Yes, sir. Just to cover really to the top of the window. And if you look at it from this angle, you know, it's not gonna change anything when you turn to take away from the visual sight that the drivers have. I don't think it's a safety concern, and I do think it actually matches the characteristics of the neighborhood. I think it might be a better design, and I think it would provide more safety for the kids.
What is the height of the columns?
These columns are six feet tall.
Okay.
Let me put it back up there. Now, on the other side, when the gentleman was talking, we have the same type of brick wall. This is matching that. The only difference is that some of the bricks are missing, so that it has open windows. I was hoping that we could just build a solid wall all the way up, so nobody can peek through the bricks.
Is that your fence or your neighbor's wall?
That's our wall. I bought the property that.
Right.
It's been there for about 12 years, sir. Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number 20-20-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number 20-20-BAC? No one against? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
For the purpose of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved.
Hold on. I would like...
Go ahead.
We just have discussion after.
Okay. There's been motion to approve by Mr. Berry, second by Ms. Pearson, but there's discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to go on record and say that while I agree with staff that this does not rise to the level of meeting any hardship, I did drive down from Paramount North on Line today on my way to the meeting and observed, as the gentleman said in his photographs, that there are multiple brick walls and fences along Line Avenue, and unless you're looking for them, they don't really jump out at you. I don't... I didn't consider them to be an obstruction or out of character, and I think therefore it does not cause, you know, public nuisance or distraction, which is another thing that we look for as criteria. And I think, given the amount of traffic and noise on Line Avenue alone, I could be persuaded by that argument alone that it would be warranted for someone who lives that close to the street. And given the other issues that the gentleman raised, I am advocating for approval.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I've said this on a number of occasions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I've said this on a number of occasions. As the MPC staff, we are required to evaluate the code and ensure that if something does not comply with the code, to recommend denial. But as I realize in some meetings prior to this one, that the reason that we have a board is to consider other alternatives to us being in total compliance with the code. And what we start doing is adding those options to the approval process. If you look at them, we share with you that our recommendation is denied, but that you can approve these variances if you feel that they will not be detrimental to the help saved and welfare of citizens in the city.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'd also just briefly like to say I appreciate the time that went into the proposal that Mr. Jack Berry Antifagi brought to us. I thought he made his case very well, and if everybody would do that, it would make our job a lot easier.
All right, thank you, sir. Motion on the floor to approve. Let us vote. And the motion carries. Next case on the agenda, case number 20-21-BAC, the applicant, Mr. Larry Henderson.
Good afternoon again, everyone. My name is Ben Moller, and I am with the Metropolitan Planning Commission, speaking for case 20-21-BAC. The applicant is Larry Henderson. The location is 1104 Gooseberry Hill. The existing zoning is R17. The request is a variance to maximum fence height, and it is a proposed use of a single-family residential district. The applicant is requesting a variance to construct an eight-foot-tall metal fence surrounding the corner side yard of his property, and a five-foot-tall metal fence surrounding the front yard of his property. I believe that this is to allow for a variance of two feet to the six-foot-high maximum, as well as two feet to the five-foot maximum, or sorry, three-foot maximum in the front yard. When looking at hardship as well as impact for it, we did find that denial of this variance is warranted. The requested variance will result in the installation of a fence that is inconsistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will overall not absolve the applicant of any substantial hardship that was mentioned. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Any questions on the board? There are none. Thank you, Mr. Moller.
Thank you.
Is anyone speaking for case number 20-21-BAC?
Hi, my name is Larry Henderson. I reside at 1104 Gooseberry Hill, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. I'm requesting a fence height variance.
Yes.
Okay, in 2016, I purchased this home with a vision, looking at the yard, that I wanted to fence it in, allow my pets, allow my family and friends to enjoy the yard. It's a pretty big yard, but somewhere along the line, the rules changed. You guys made a rule change. In 2016, when I purchased it, I took another job for the city of Shreveport. Well, I was working for the city. I took a promotion for the city of Shreveport, and I was working anywhere from 40 to 112 hours a week. When I took a month off to close this and work on the property, and when I took that month off, some of that time, the date was pushed back for the closing, and I wanted to do all that work within that time, that month's time, at least a lot of it. And so I wasn't able to do it. When I went back to work after that month off, I had to concentrate on a fire rating for the city of Shreveport. And so in concentrating on that fire rating, I was at work sometimes 16 hours a day, seven days a week, and I just didn't have time to attend to the house. When you guys changed stuff, is there a way that we could find out about the rule changes? I think this change was made in 2017, that the height variances are lower or whatever. Is there a way? But you can ask that later. So the rule that's currently in place, or the ordinance currently in place, would cause me to split my backyard. And in splitting my yard... Could I use this as well? Splitting my yard would be three-foot fence being here and a privacy fence coming out the edge of the house. I couldn't see my whole yard if my, say, grandkids, which are on the way, or grandchildren or nieces or nephews running around. It would obstruct my view from watching them, otherwise I would have to come around. And even the chain-link fence, I have dogs, and dogs are in the area. So if my grandkid or child would stick their hand through that fence on either side, and a dog would bite it, then I have problems, whether it's my people or whether it's somebody walking down the street. I just rode around town, and there's another fence where the ordinance caused it to separate the yard. And I'm trying not to do that in my real yard, but I'll get to that. I'm not an architect or anything like that, but I try to demonstrate my yard. This in blue shows the area that would be outside of this fence, which is the edge of my house. And this would be the open area that I could enjoy with the site being obstructed here. And I couldn't see without going outside of that area to see what's going on over there. So I'm asking to lay that fence all the way so that it will be enclosed, my people can enjoy the whole yard without being obstructed. It's like a... I want it like a playground. I want them to have fun at home. And if I can't have eight feet, six feet, it's fine. I understand. That's what I'm asking for. The variance allows for three feet. This is three feet. I have dogs. My dogs can jump over this. Neighbors have dogs, and dogs are in the area can jump over that. My idea is to protect the neighborhood and myself. That's what I'm trying to do. So once dogs were running loose in the area, I was out blowing leaves off my roof. I had to stay up there 30 minutes until somebody came and got their dogs. There was two rottweilers. So I only had my phones, but I didn't... So I stayed on the roof till they came and got them. And I also have... This is a dog running loose in the neighborhood here. Here, my yard is open. This is a dog that came on the property. This is me running inside a building to get away from it, though I did have a dog out, and I called that dog so they wouldn't fight. These are other dogs that came on my property, and my dogs were in the building with me that I just ran into in the previous photo, and they ran out to meet those dogs. And on that day, they did cross the street and continue to fight with those dogs. If I can show you a video of that. So my dogs were in the shop with me, where the last two dogs came out. The first two dogs knew something was going on, of course, before I did, and went out to meet the other dogs. I'll roll it again, just in case. Now, those dogs there have been, at least the white dog, since I've moved there, and if it wasn't that white dog, it was another white dog, maybe related to, but it looked like that, have been over constantly. And then, when a dog come over, then the neighbor comes over to retrieve their dog, and it's my backyard, and I want the backyard to be... I feel like it's private, and people should come to the front door. And also, the reason I was requesting a metal fence, because the wood fence is thin, and this is my neighbor on the other side. This is his dog poking through after chewing. This is his dog poking through after chewing the fence, and trying to get at my dogs. Now, my dogs also chew that fence, too. And sometime they go and they play, sometime they go and they fight. And this is just some other hoes that they chewed in. So I've been trying to find something that would prevent them from getting to each other and hurting each other. That neighbor's no longer there, but I don't know who's gonna move in. Also, my pets have run into the street harassing other pets running up and down the street, so I don't want that either. And they've run into the neighbors' yards and stuff like that, so I would like to keep them in. Sometimes, they don't always obey and come back when you ask them to. Also, we have just random people coming to the back door. I don't know why this guy comes to the back door instead of the front. This happens whether you're at home or not. That's his car, and he walked up. So... In putting the fence up the way I want it, that I'm asking for, I'm gonna show you my property lines, and how it would not affect the street view of the street, that people can go ahead and see what they need to see. This is- this is my state for my property, so all this would be open, people could see going in the front of my property, that's Gooseberry Hill. This is the Midvale side. When this thing came up, I put those white things so the neighbors could see what I was trying to propose, what I was trying to do, and what it would do. And so, that would be the open area, and again, it wouldn't obstruct the view. And that just- this is more of the front yard. On Gooseberry to give you an idea of how much it's open. Okay, so I've seen other places in Shreveport, and I guess y'all could- y'all police the whole city, or make the rules for the whole city, and I just want to be treated fair. And I'm not trying to- I take care of my yard, I keep it looking neat, and so I see other places, even in the neighborhood.
Mr. Henderson, your time is up, sir.
Okay. Can I have more time? Can I ask for more time?
You'll have a rebuttal.
Yeah, there's time for rebuttal.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking for case number two zero dash two one dash BAC? Is there anyone speaking against case number two zero dash two one dash BAC?
Hi, Marsha Pelakakis, nine three three five Midvale Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven eighteen.
Ma'am, excuse me, could you pull the mic down closer to your port and repeat what you just said, please?
Marsha Pelakakis, nine three three five Midvale Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven eighteen.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Me and I've got two other people live across the street from Mr. Larry. He puts that fence up. Now, I look out, I've lived there for twenty-some years, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I'm gonna see a wooden fence or a steel fence at my front door, at my bedroom window. And he's saying that he wants- I don't know what kind of metal fence he's talking about, but this is a view from my house from across the street, and I would see just a wooden fence all the way down, or steel fence. We're talking ninety-some feet, is what he's asking for. This is from a neighbor's house. That would be their view. Wouldn't be able to see anything. And this is from my other neighbor's house, her house is on this side over here, so when you look in, obviously you're gonna see the big wooden fence. I just, uh... I don't think that, after living there all those years, and having a fence, that you can't see anything. I just, you know, it just makes me upset that I won't be able to look at my window, and I just gonna see a long wooden fence, that high, too. I mean, if he wants to put a chain-link fence up, so we can see through it, I don't have any problem with that. But that's like having a whole Walmart, the length of Walmart in front of your house. I wouldn't wanna look- you guys probably wouldn't wanna look at and see a wooden fence or steel fence in front of your house either. Let's see, she had some boots. Oh, yeah, it was- it's a hundred and fifty-eight feet, the fence is gonna be a hundred and fifty-eight feet in front of my house. And this is, like Larry, I don't want no hard feelings, but I just... And, you know, people walking up your- on your yard, everybody's yard, everybody walks in people's yards. All the dogs in the neighborhood are gonna be there, whether you got a fence or not, they're gonna come somewhere in your yard. That's not all I have to say. I have two other people.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else speaking against case number two zero dash two one dash BAC? If you notice, there's three minutes allowed for each additional person.
My name's Stacy Pelakakis. I live at nine three three five Midvale Drive, with my mother also, but I actually own the house right next to hers, so this is kinda like with my house also, the view or whatever. I just have a couple pictures. This is from upstairs of my mom's house, looking out, so that whole entire thing is gonna be a fence. If it was like a wrought iron fence, like maybe like the slitted ones, that wouldn't be that bad, 'cause you can still have like kind of a view. Not sure exactly what he's planning on doing. But like she said, it's just a straight-up wall that we'd be looking at every day we looked out the window, or the house. This is the corner house across the street from him. Their fence, they only have it from the back down, so it's not obstructing like even anybody's house on this side, looking over. I mean, they could still see a yard, they could still see a house. Basically, I think it's just- it's blocking Mr. Larry's house, and he does have a beautiful yard. He do have a beautiful yard. He keeps it up very well. It's mainly the view thing, and not wanting to look outside and see just a fence every day. And, you know, if we tried to sell our house, is somebody gonna wanna buy it knowing, oh, I gotta look outside at a fence every day? 'Cause you don't have a view of your neighborhood. We're not really against him doing it, except for the fact that we can't see what we're gonna, you know? So if we can actually see through it, chain-link fence, like my mom suggested, or just putting this fence on the backside of his house even, and not all the way down the side, would probably be better, 'cause he has a big yard. But coming off the back would look a lot better, I think. And that's all.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Do I have to fill out one of these?
Okay, anyone else speaking against number- case number two zero dash two one dash BAC?
My name is Brenda Palmer. I'm sorry?
Put your ma- your- there you go.
Okay. My name is Brenda Palmer, ninety-three thirty-nine Midvale Drive, Shreveport. I live next door to Ms. Pelakakis. My house is- this is- I wrote on this, if you just shut this. My house is just- is southeast of his house. So Ms. Pelakakis had a picture of the view from my house, so- and Gooseberry runs right into my house. I agree with what the- what they said, that it just- it's just gonna look like an eyesore, I believe. We thought it was gonna be a wooden fence. Mr. Henderson had told Mrs. Pelakakis that it was gonna be eight feet tall. That seems extreme. And he did mention he has dogs. I believe he has six or seven German Shepherd dogs, and I understand, I have two dogs, and I do not let my dogs out. If they get out, it's gonna be very unlikely. But- and I understand that's what he wants, to keep his dogs to be able to use the yard and not get out. But now that we know that it's a steel fence, and we don't know what it looks- gonna look like, I just don't think that that's gonna be appealing to our neighborhood. It's an old neighborhood, it's in Southern Hills, and I just... I don't believe it's gonna look good at all for anybody, especially for us that has to look at it every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking against case number two zero dash two one dash BAC? Mr. Henderson, you have a rebuttal, sir?
Is there a time limit on the rebuttal? Is there a time limit on the rebuttal?
We'll give you three minutes.
Okay. Again, these are some more homes in Shreveport. This guy has the front of his house with the smaller fence and the taller fence around back. This is a steel fence on, I think it's Kingston Road. He has it around on both sides of his- that's the corner lot. Okay, and also, and I understand the idea of steel fence, but I also found some wood, cedar wood, that's a little bit thicker that I wouldn't mind going with. I like the cedar fence better myself. But the cedar fence that they sell in the stores are- is just too thin. So- and also, I got a lot of signatures from the neighbors. This is the fence I proposed to put up. Had the opportunity to meet some neighbors. So I went around the neighborhood within a five-hundred-foot radius that you guys gave, and talked to some of the neighbors, and these are the neighbors that didn't have a problem with it. I didn't talk to all of them, some of them weren't at home, or didn't come to the door. Had a few say they rode in, maybe against, and I had- I talked to three people for sure that were against it. And so... And all I'm trying to do is protect my family, protect the neighborhood, the pets, and enjoy my yard. Basically, the neighbors said they basically want to look inside my yard. I just wanna close it. It's a privacy fence, I want privacy. That's it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Lots of questions, actually, I have lots of concerns, which lead to many questions. I sympathize and I understand your desire for security and for privacy. My first question is, why the blue metal wall?
The dogs were chewing, my dogs and the neighbor's dog were chewing the fence, eating, getting at each other, sometime fighting, and sometime they would play. And I'm not only gonna have- I'm finna have my first grandkid, so I'm not only gonna have those dogs over there. I don't want those dogs eating through the fence.
I get the metal part for that reason, but you've chosen a very striking color of blue.
Well, it doesn't have to be that color.
Commercial waterpark, in my opinion, which is definitely not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So that's one question. The other is, I look on the site plan you put in, you've got- you've got an eight-foot fence depicted from the corner of your house, the front corner of your house, all around the property, and reconnecting to the other, the southeast front corner of your house. What's the need for the five-foot fence section in the front of the yard?
Well...
When you've got all that backyard now, why do you need a double fence? It's like- it's like you're creating a moat and a- and a- like a Sallyport. I don't understand that.
You don't understand why?
Why you have a double fence in the front? If you have an eight-foot fence, why you need the five-foot fence?
If I had an eight-foot fence, I just want- if I have my kids or grand- my grandkids in the front, I just want them to be safe. That's it. I don't want anybody messing with them, I don't want any dogs, anything messing with them. If they wanna play in the front yard, backyard, I just wanna be safe. And the reason I decided, I had a guy come up to the house, and he just looked over the six-foot fence, and that's what made me think. I didn't know we had an eight-foot ordinance.
Okay. And I'm glad you mentioned the ordinance. I don't know what rule change, I mean, we did put a new UDC in, and that was over a year-long process with many public forums for people to come give comment, well-publicized and throughout the community, displays at libraries. There was plenty of opportunity when this went through, there was lots of news articles about it. But even under the old ordinance, this is not something you would have been able to do by right.
Okay.
I'm fairly certain. So you mentioned that you might be thinking about a wooden fence as opposed to the blue metal.
Yes, sir. I found a thicker cedar that's one inch. The cedar that they sell in the store is about a half inch.
Right, I'm familiar.
And so those dogs are eating that up. And so if I could get a one-inch thicker sticker, and I could probably run something along the bottom to help it on the inside, of course.
All right, now tell me about the eight-foot, the eight-foot necessity. Why eight feet? A six-foot fence is standard.
Okay.
Which would still require variance for your- for your eastern side.
Right.
And your street sides.
Right.
But... But why eight feet all the way around?
Well, the code says you can have an eight-foot fence. If I wasn't on the corner, I could put an eight-foot fence all the way around my house.
You can have an eight-foot fence on your- is that your northern and western side?
On the opposite side, I can't, yes.
But again, why? Why the need for- you don't have anyone above you looking down on you. I don't imagine your dogs are gonna jump an eight-foot fence, or a six-foot fence even.
They have cleared the six- a six-foot fence. I have six-foot fence back there, though, and they have cleared the six-foot fence. And I'm just trying to keep everybody safe. And my dogs aren't the only dogs that have cleared a six-foot fence. I don't know how he did it, but when I looked around, he was coming over the fence, so...
For my part, I tend to agree. I think it's- it's an eight-foot fence on the street side.
Okay.
Is a little excessive. For the look of the neighborhood, I sympathize with your neighbors, I must say.
Okay, could we reduce it to a six-foot fence?
That's up to the board. You can- if you're amenable to that, we can consider that in our deliberations.
Okay. That's six-foot wood, while you deliberate.
But that's- I don't know what the other board members are thinking.
You did ask- you did ask a question that I didn't put- the fence is not blue. When I took the picture, I don't know why it came out blue. It's about the color of the table, it's white, all white, almond color. I don't know why it came out blue. I couldn't- I couldn't change it.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, 'cause when I first looked at it, I was perplexed, that it was... I thought I was looking at a water park.
No.
All right, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? I have a question as well. You said you were amenable to the six-foot fence. Is that all the way around, or just on the street side?
I would like eight foot. I don't know what's gonna happen with the vacant houses on the other side, so nobody's gonna see that, it's gonna be in the back. It'll run out- if I would have to run out the street side and the front six feet, that's fine, but between the two properties, I wouldn't mind running eight, but if I have to run six, I'd do whatever you guys want.
You can have that one, right?
Right, yeah.
Correct?
Right. My other question is, with running a fence along the Midvale side of your property?
Yes, sir.
Does it have to be all the way down the property that height? Or do you- are amenable to dropping it down when it gets to the front part of the house? Man, I'm trying to get it to understand, 'cause I'm looking at a drawing, and I'm not... Yeah, where is it gonna drop, that's five feet? So at the front of your house line, you wanna drop to five feet?
Oh, yeah, after it gets to the front, I could even go forward, but I just thought that three feet was a little small. But in talking to some of the neighbors as I was doing the petition, they did express a four-foot fence would be okay, some of them did, and the five-foot would be too high, and I don't have a problem with that. But I just think three feet would be too, too low. And it doesn't have to- it doesn't have to be solid. I just don't want the kids sticking their hands in, get bit through the fence. I mean, we have a lot of dogs in the neighborhood, and kids do what kids do.
Right.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a- on the picture we're looking at, it doesn't have a fence. Do you have a fence around your house at all right now?
Yes, ma'am. It's not around my- I, I, it's, it's not around my house. I have fence where I keep, uh, my dogs separate, which was already there when I moved in. It's not there. I think you probably saw it on, on their pictures when they were looking over at my house. Uh... Would you mind? Would you mind if she come up and show you the picture?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, that white area behind the house? I can touch your phone. This area here?
Oh, okay.
My dogs are behind that. It's, it's a, a portion of the yard that's closed off. And it would be... It would be this section, no, this section here that's closed off. From here?
Okay.
To another building, and behind that building, and it stops here, that's closed off. Then I have a fence six feet here, and a six-foot fence runs around here. This is a neighbor's fence, but it's six feet, run back here and stop at the utility box.
How high is that fence now?
It's six feet.
It's six feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
Mr. Henderson, I have a question for you, um, and this is gonna relate to you and also the, uh, the staff here. Are you just dead set on the type of fence that you want right now, or you wanna come into compliance with what they're asking?
You mean three feet?
No, you mentioned this, this eight-foot fence around the, the entire perimeter, other than the front. Are you amenable to the side, you know, conforming to what, uh, what they're asking you to? Or coming to some kind of con...
Agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, sir, I'll change, and we, we can do something different. It doesn't have to be five feet, uh, and that, and that's what I asked for. But the, the code is six feet, and I had a yardstick up here a minute ago showing what three feet is.
Okay, so you, you just not dead set on it being a metal fence on the side of your house?
No. I did not want metal. I, I, that, that wood, that wood that I found, that's one inch thick, it's cedar, it's gonna last a long time, it doesn't deteriorate like the other wood, it'd do me great.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I would redirect you all to the, the requirements for variances. And we're not, we're not selectively choosing on a case-by-case basis, but, uh, we do look at health, ser, safety, welfare, hardships, and those are things would recommend a granting of variance. And as we look at this, and we've been looking at it throughout the, the, uh, presentation, we cannot come up with any hardships. We, we see a significant, uh, uh, aesthetic, uh, negative implication to the neighborhood, but we're unable to come up, and once we concluded that the white area in the back is where dogs are kept, we kind of really could not come up with any reason to encourage you to grant a variance in this case.
I have a, I have a question for staff. There's a photograph, can you get the photograph back up that shows the, um, site plan? So if, if a fence were to come off of the, where the purple meets the house toward, and then go toward the street, you know, on the, where the purple area?
Oh, this?
How far off of the street could he build a six-foot fence? And, and be in compliance? If it came off the corner of the house and went north, could it?
It cannot go past the building line of the house.
It's the pink area.
If it was on the corner?
It's the pink area.
And went, I suppose that's north?
Yes. Oh, it's the purple area out there. It's this area, it's here.
So it, it can't go toward, uh, is it mid, what, mid veil from the house, correct?
Correct.
If it came off the house, it could be how tall?
Uh, eight foot, if it's, if it's, well...
If it's in line with the side of the house?
Right. I could...
I, I just, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, would there be any benefit to having him work with staff about a design change that might, say he came off the house, uh, did not, did not, um, go down the side of the house? If, if the fence on mid veil didn't come any further south than the rear of his house?
Here.
And then, that would be a variance of, you know, that would be reducing the length of the fence at, at six feet. It's hard to explain without doing a drawing. I just think there's so many variables that need to change in this, I don't think we're gonna be able to, uh, address it with, with...
Are you saying that one of the things that, I'm gonna speak for you, but are you thinking that there may be a different design that staff could work with, that this board maybe could get behind with a lesser variance?
If we were to defer and continue?
If you were to defer it.
Now, that, that's a question that, that it's still gonna be a, a significant variance for a significant length of fence. And if the answer is no, the answer is no, I just looking at all options. So that he doesn't have to come back with another case.
I'd have to have a clear understanding exactly what would be proposed in order to...
Right.
And I, I mean, I could show you, uh, a diagram that kind of shows what can be allowed. If you're, if you're coming from the street and you're not going, you're going from the front of the house back towards the interior, that could be eight feet. What, what you can't do is have something higher than three feet, that's either in the side yard or the front yard.
Right, okay.
So if there was a way for him to comply, to get what he wanted and comply with ordinance, obviously we'd work with them to do it, or, or can reduce the amount of variance, we'd be glad to work with them. I just don't know what that answer is right now in this meeting.
Right.
There probably is some middle ground somewhere.
My, my concern, sir, is on your behalf, is that if we vote up or down today, and you wanna come back with a different design, you're gonna have to reapply.
Right.
And start the process over again.
I can appreciate that.
If you think that you can adjust your desires and needs to come closer in compliance with what is required, and come back, and, you know...
I can do that.
Kinda, find out what is more allowable, uh, and whether, and it may not, it may have to be chain link, or something that is a combination of, uh, you know, three-foot solid with, with, um, uh, something above it that is, you know, more visible through, uh, you see through, that's, that's not...
So that, so the people can see my yard?
That's so side obstructing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm just, give me the options.
Yeah, I know. But, the, the, okay, this purple area, this can be in compliance with the, with the taller fence.
If you had a six-foot fence following that purple line?
That's legal.
Eight-foot fence.
That's legal.
That's legal.
That's legal, right?
If, if it followed that line, that purple line, it'd be legal.
It's legal, yes, sir.
Is that, is, is that allowing where the, where the house is? What am I saying?
This is the house. This square is the house, this is the edge of the house.
That's the edge of the house there, yes.
Rolled off the state of the house.
Backyard.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. That's correct. I just wanna make sure, what I was saying, 'cause I seen this other rectangular on the left-hand side, and I...
That's another building.
Okay. So if it's, if it's in line with a house, it goes backwards, yes, but it can't go out towards the street on either side?
This blue area is, is the concern.
You cannot do anything that's side obstructing above three feet where you're pointing right now.
That's the concern.
Right.
I just want you to understand, if, if you came into this meeting not having any of this information clearly explained, if there was a way that you could have those options explained, and you could come up with a design that would more fit those designs, you would not have to start the process over if you still needed a, a lesser variance.
Okay, I can appreciate that, and I just wanna close it off and keep it safe. And, and we can work something out, and I'd be happy to work with my neighbors, uh, that we can come up with something.
You, you said you went through and looked at, at, or polled your neighbors, are you aware of opposition?
Of what?
Are you aware, are you aware of more opposition than the people who spoke today?
Yes, sir. Just a li, a little bit. I, I didn't speak to everybody, but I've talked to three people that were definitely against it as well.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause we did receive some letters of opposition.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there gonna be a continuance? Got a vote on it?
Please.
I'm making motion to defer this case to a later date, when we have more information on the different design.
Okay, it's been moved by... You have the time, Brian?
Uh, next meeting?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Okay. Removed by Ms. Dunn, that we defer for thirty days, or a second? Second by Ms. Pearson, let us vote.
Before you vote, Mr. Chair, would you include some specific directions to us that you want us to look into, uh, if you want us to bring something back, or do you want the applicant to bring something back?
Um...
Do you want us to meet and, with the applicant and try to come up with some solution that would be agreeable with the applicant and...
Right. We're asking that, that if you and applicant would get together, staff and applicant get, get together, and whatever is allowable, we talking about from the back corner of his house back, that staff can, you know, come to an agreement on with him, that's what we're asking.
Of course, when you say allowable, you mean that's in the ordinance now?
Yes.
Well, that's what I showed you, what, if I'm not misspeaking, the purple area from the back of the house all the way back can be a taller fence.
So you, you agreeing with that, that's what you want?
No, I want the blue area, I want my grandkids, godkids, nieces and nephews to be able to play in that blue area without having to stop and go around a fence.
Okay. Are you willing to meet with staff to come to?
Toward the street.
Okay, are you willing to meet with staff to come to some kind of...
Yes, sir, I, I am.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay, let us vote for the thirty-day deferral. And if motion carries. Okay, next case, case number two zero dash two-two BAC, uh, Zola Hamilton.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Alice Correa, MPC staff. This is case twenty dash twenty-two dash BAC, thirty-one fifty-four West Caperton Street. The applicant is requesting a variance for approval of a five-foot height variance to, uh, extend an eight-foot tall fence, uh, along her side property line, a solid fence. A variance, as noted, requires demonstration of a hardship that's inherent to the property, that is not self-induced by the owner, and that the variance will have no negative impact on the surrounding area. Based on the information provided with the application and an assessment of the site and the neighborhood, the hardship and negative impact criteria are not met. Therefore, the staff is recommending denial of this application. Unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have.
Any question from the board? Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone speaking for case number two zero dash two-two dash BAC?
My name is Zola Hamilton. I live at thirty-one fifty-four West Caperton. And basically, I need to make a correction when something was said, and I asked for a five-foot fence, a four- or five-foot fence along the edge going toward the road. That's what I asked for.
I'm sorry, but you said you, you asked for a what now?
Okay. This area right here is the front toward the road here.
Uh huh.
Okay. This section right here is a six-foot cyclone fence. I asked for a either four- or five-foot wood fence coming up to about here. I know I can't take it always to the road because you have to be able to see, uh, traffic. So therefore, I can drop it down toward the, the road here. But I asked for a four-to-five-foot fence, wood fence along here. And, and where we were talking about the eight-foot fence, the eight-foot fence is actually a little past the corner of the house here, going all the way toward the back, which is, I'm in the middle of two lots, so I'm in the middle section. I'm not on a corner lot. I know I have to take the eight-foot fence back to the corner of the house, is what I'm told, but, um, and drop it down, but I want to drop it down to a four- or five-foot fence, not to a three-foot. Three-foot up against that cyclone wouldn't do any good. Uh, my neighbor and I have had conflict over the whole time I've lived there. And occasionally, she has removed, actually on two occasions, she has removed, uh, the fence in between the two lots. I do have a dog, um, I have a boxer, um, which they have problems, but anyway. My dog, I tried to keep it inside the fence, he does stay inside the fence. There's been numerous calls to animal control that my dog was at large, but my dog is either in the house or in the fence. He's never outside the fence, okay? So therefore, I needed to keep down conflict, I wanted to run the wood fence further toward the front. But I know it cannot be eight feet because of the variance, but, I mean, sorry, because of the ordinance, but I want to run, uh, from the corner of the house to like eight ti, eight feet from the road, uh, from the front fence here, so that it cut down conflict.
Okay, is that, that's your argument?
That's basically my argument, Jorge. Uh, like I said, there's been a lot of conflict, been a lot of police calls, been a lot of animal control calls, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
I have a question, before she leaves, I have a question for staff. I'm looking at, in the packet, there's a photo, uh, I don't have what page it's on. It's, um, page twenty-three of the packet, and it shows the eight-foot wooden fence extending beyond the front of the house.
Right.
Is that considered non-conforming at this time?
I don't see how we get, I don't see how we get to non-conforming unless we can prove that, uh, it meets the directions for prescription.
So my question is, is, is it, is it on the table right now that that section of fence that extends forward of the house has to come down as a result of whatever happens here?
I would say that, that that portion, if we're looking at the same thing, uh, that come beyond the front corner of the house is in violation, and there was probably a violation letter that she received from zoning enforcement. Unfortunately, Mr. Jordan is not able to be here today, but, uh, I think that, uh, non-conforming is really an extremely large leap in stretch.
Right, so regardless of what we do, that portion of the fence has to come down unless we include that in a variance?
Yes.
Thank, that's, that's what I need to know.
Okay. What I was asking was, Jorge, from the corner of the house, where you said the eight-foot fence would have to come down, that it would be a four- or five-foot fence there, wood fence that would run onto about where, right here?
And are you suggesting that you, that you will take down the chain link fence?
No, it, it just will go there.
So now we have three fences there?
No, there's only, okay.
I'm looking at...
Corner of, okay. If, if you could actually see it, there's a section missing from her side of the fence, okay? Where she actually taken out a section of the fence that would, that opened up the lot between the two properties.
Right.
We ran the cyclone fence at that time to close it, so the dogs could not go over. What animal control said was, if she opened the fence, which she did, it invites the dog over, okay? But he said if the dog should bite her, then it's my problem, okay? So the thing about it is, even on where you see the, the eight-foot, toward the back, this one, you can show this one.
Okay, but I'm, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second, Ms. Hamilton. I'm looking at a photograph that's in our packet, which I assume was taken by one of our staff. And for us, it's, um, page fourteen of our packet, and it shows two cyclone fences, and I'm looking toward the street.
Right.
One on her side, which is lower.
Mm-hmm.
And one on your side, which is higher.
But there is a section that's missing out of the fence.
Toward the back of the house?
No, that cyclone fence there. The cyclone fence section, um... There is a section missing right along the...
Page fourteen in the packet.
There is a section missing right along the here, out of her side.
But when did it, when did it come down?
I think it was twenty fifteen.
So these, okay, so staff, these are not pictures taken by y'all?
No, this is staff. Staff taking these pictures, but there is a section missing out of the fence.
Can't be much, because I'm looking at the street.
So, so Ms. Hamilton?
Yes?
The section that she took out. Your fence is still there, is that correct?
Now it is, at the time when she removed the fence, there was no fence there.
So right now, if your dog went out, your dog could not get in her yard?
Not now.
Okay.
Okay.
I think one of the concerns too, ma'am, is that what you're proposing, you know, putting another fence up, you're looking at three fences from the corner of your house all the way out to the street, and that's...
Okay, no, there's not three fences all the way. The fence actually from right here, where the eight-foot wood fence is to the road, there is two fences, okay? Behind there, the eight-foot fence, there is a part where her part of her fence is up. There's actually another section of fence missing out of her side on that backside of the wood fence.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm looking at and trying to get a clarification on is there are two chain link fences side by side right now, correct? So you're proposing to take your chain link fence down?
I can, I can, or I can, a portion of it would have to come down. Okay, because if I take the chain link fence all the way down, then that would, I either have to run the wood all the way to the out toward the road, or either leave a section of it in because the dog would be able to get over there then.
So you're suggesting that you want to, if you drop your fence down to the three-foot, the wooden part down to three-foot, you want to leave the chain link fence up?
I wouldn't have to put, okay, I wouldn't have to actually drop it down to three feet.
There's the orange right there.
Okay. If we're looking here from her side, okay, like I said, from here to here, if I can run the four- or five-foot fence, okay? I can take the chain link, chain link out at that portion. It's just from there to the road, I cannot.
Right.
Because it would open it up.
Right.
Okay. It does not have to be three fences, as long as I can put, run my fence.
Okay.
I guess my question is, you've already got a five-foot chain link fence. What does putting a four-foot board fence up in front of it do for you?
Because of the conflict between me and my neighbor, that she sort of harasses my dog all the time. And she does things that he runs the fence, she sprayed him in the eye with lice salt. She's done several things, so you know, it's she, she'll come out, used to come out and yell at him. She go, she takes her, what's it called, the car alarm. She sets the car alarm off with the house alarm.
Okay, but I'm just saying that a fence is not, a wooden fence that's lower than the chain link fence is not gonna affect that at all.
Okay. The only, it's not gonna affect that, but he can walk around.
Those are problems for a different venue. Right? We can't, we can't handle disputes between neighbors, that's another venue altogether. And in my opinion, or view, putting a four-foot or five-foot wooden fence up, where you've already got a, what is that, a six-foot, five-foot chain link? Doesn't help anything. It's just adding another fence which you don't need. And so we're giving you a variance for something that you don't need, which is the opposite of a hardship.
Okay, well, another thing is that she drives, she'll drive from the end of the street back and forth on the drive when the dog is out there because you know he'll come to the fence.
Okay, again, that's, that's not our purview to assist you with, unfortunately.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is anyone else speaking for case number two zero dash two two dash BAC? Is anyone speaking against case number two zero dash two two dash BAC? Any more discussion from the board about this? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you speaking for or against, ma'am?
Against.
Okay.
My name is Thelma Rhodes. I'm at thirty-one fifty West Caperton. And I have, I've sent videos and letters to Alice Carrera at Emmett Trent. And in my letter, it states that I have worked hard and paid for a thirty-year mortgage, and a fence down my driveway would block my view. Did you, do you have pictures of that, or did I need to? Well, you have pictures of it already, I have one on my phone. What? Hold on just a second.
Are you her next-door neighbor, ma'am?
Yes, I am. This is, that's a picture where they attempted to put up an eight-foot fence. And it would it would block my view, and it would, it would have me to back out into oncoming traffic from behind an eight-foot wooden fence. And having, I would have to park my vehicle behind that eight-foot wooden fence. And another fact is my age, I'm seventy-one years old, and I live alone, and entering and exiting that, my vehicle from behind an eight-foot wooden fence would be putting my safety at risk. And it would lower my property value, and it would make a hardship for me to sell my home. I tried to resolve this issue years ago, but by offering Mrs. Hamilton to pay for bags and lime, and she refused. So that is the reason why I was, that's why I'm against it.
I'm sorry, you offered to pay for what again, ma'am?
Offered, she's talking about the dogs, I offered to pay for bags for her to pick up her dog feces and lime, but she refused it. And this twenty-foot setback is, like you've, like you've said, it's this is, this is, it would put me, my vehicles would put me behind a wall. But I can understand from what you all told her, that you already understand the situation. So I don't, do I need to say anything more?
It's up to you, ma'am.
Well, that's about it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition of case number two zero dash two two dash BAC?
Good afternoon, my name is Carlos Underwood, thirty-one fifty West Caperton, this is my aunt. I have a letter from another neighbor, Bobby Prather, who resides at thirty-one fifty-eight West Caperton. His letter states, Alice Carrera and those that need to know, I'm against erecting an eight-foot fence since it devalues property. I had one on my side of the fence that was six-foot. Zola Hamilton cornered the inspector to say that mine was out of code. After receiving a letter from the inspector saying my fence was in violation, I removed it. The reason Zola Hamilton wants a privacy fence, in my opinion, is to hide dog poop and to harass her neighbor. The fence in front gate at thirty-one fifty-four West Caperton that belongs to Tyrone Hamilton opens up onto the street and causes already a distraction and a violation from oncoming traffic. At this time, I'm against erecting a fence that would block our street view. I've been called several times by Ms. Thelma stating that she's been harassed by her next-door neighbor, Ms. Zola, and that dog poop is constantly placed by the fence, causing her to smell it and see it while entering and exiting her vehicle. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking in opposition of case number two zero dash two two dash BAC? All right, anything from the board?
Do you want to allow a rebuttal, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, have a rebuttal?
Okay. First of all, I did not ask for an eight-foot fence to the road, okay? There are posts up there. Once the Metodyne Commission person came out, he said we cannot run it, so I said, okay. So the posts are there, there is no fence except for... Okay. The fence stopped here, okay? There is, the post is there, but there's no fence, eight-foot there. I know now that I cannot put that there, that's when I asked for the five-foot to go from back here to where I have to back it off, to the corner of the house. Okay? Up to here. It would still give her enough footage at two... But it would still give enough footage to see coming in and out, okay? It would keep her from seeing all over my yard. But for instance, dog poop, we scoop it up. Animal control had been out multiple times because they get called constantly, one guy said he had fourteen calls on his pad along. My yard, I pick it up. I work, okay? I work, I'm a central worker. I work anywhere from forty-seven hours to a hundred and forty-nine hours a pay period, okay, which is two weeks. Okay, so I'm busy. I be gone a lot, okay? I just don't have time for foolishness. And for his harassment, she don't hear from me unless animal control or police comes out. But I want a four-foot, a five-foot fence from here, the wood fence, to run it forward, like I said, so my dog can have some peace walking out in the yard. Other than that, like I said, I know this fence, I was told, has to go back to the corner of the house. Okay? That I understood that. That's all I have to say.
Ma'am? Hold on one second, ma'am.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes?
Do your dogs ever go venture into your backyard?
Okay. There was another incident when she took the second section out of the backside of the fence between the house and her yard, where she was messing with the dog, he hit the gate, broke the gate, because it's partially broken already, went back there. She videoed the whole thing, showed it to the police, showed it to animal control, and tried to tell them that he charged her. But the thing about it is, the fence was up between the two sections at the time, before she took the fence out, okay? And they saw that on the video. So they said not to let him go in the backyard. Actually, the backyard is actually closed off from the front by just a wood section in between the two sides, there. You can only go to the back on that side, so narrow area where you walk back there, okay? Actually, I can open it up, go to the back, where it can go round and round the house, no problem. But the only thing is, like I said, they told me not to let, because something she said, not to allow the dog in the back.
So...
And to be considerate, what I do is when she mowing and doing well in the yard, I walk him to the back on leash and bring him back in the house. Because that's where he stays, in the house. Except for when he do get to go out in the yard. They say it's his yard, he should be able to get out in his yard. Thank you.
Mr. Clark? Ms. Hamilton?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I just didn't understand, so you have a backyard, and you have, look like a pretty good-sized backyard that the dog could function in, as dogs sometimes do. But you've been prohibited from allowing your dog to go in the backyard by animal services, is that what I'm understanding?
Right, and police, yes.
So he cannot go in the backyard, you can, he stays inside the house at all times. And the only time he's out is when you allow him out to take care of his business and so forth. You can, you can only allow him in the front yard.
Or when my son comes, he'll go out there with him and let him run around out there. So other than that, he's go to his business, come back in the house. And we do keep up the yard.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I have another question, Ms. Hamilton, is there, is the, your backyard totally fenced off, or is there a hole in the fence? Or what reason did they give you for not wanting your dog to be loose in the backyard?
It was a threat made on my dog.
You say a threat?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on the board?
So the answer is that your backyard is completely closed off. There's no way your dog can get out, and no way anybody could get in. Unless they jump the fence.
If they want to jump the fence, they can, but no.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anything else on the board? Okay, do I hear a motion? It's kind of late now, ma'am. Need to go to discussion about this?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move to deny that.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Pearson to deny, do a second?
Second.
It's been second by Mr. Farrell, let us vote. And the motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public hearing. Do we have any committee reports? I'm gonna go out of order just a second. Mr. Director, would you go ahead and give us your thoughts at this time, please, sir?
And it would be extremely short, Mr. Chair. I did need to share with you that we have no cases for the month of February. So there will not be February...
We got that thirty-second...
But since you just deferred a case, we will have a meeting. We were not gonna have a meeting, but you deferred a case, so we'll have to come back for that deferral. And we're tracking along, like I shared with some of you yesterday, with the special exception use approval that should be a decision made within the next two months. And after that happens, then we will start accepting, if the board, if the council is so inclined to approve the amendment, we will start accepting applications for manufactured homes as special exception use approval. Even later, we will start accepting applications for transit vacation rentals. And I think that we also have beauty and barber shops that Ms. Pearson will love as special exception uses that will come before you. So once this ordinance is approved, these are beauty and barber shops in residential areas. Once this is approved, then we will have additional approvals to place in front of you on a monthly basis. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question about that. So, Mr. Allen, if someone already have a transient, is it a transit home? Or Airbnb or something like that, would they have to come before and do an application? They'll go immediately into violation?
If it's not my, if I'm not mistaken, and I have Adam, that's over to the side of me, transit vacation rentals were special accept, special use permit requirement right now.
Yes, currently, in order to legally and properly have a transient vacation rental, you are required currently to get a special use permit.
And to further answer your question, until we can resolve this amendment, we have not been actively enforcing that requirement, but we're thinking that once the council approves or disapproves this amendment, we'll have a better direction on how the city Shreveport wants to address short-term rentals, transit vacation rentals. So right now, you will not be seeing us. So right now, you will not be seeing us if you are operating one and have not gone through this process. If that answers your question, Mr. Dunn.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, back to old business. Do we have a report from our officer committee?
We do have a report. The committee, we're submitting and recommending that Alan Barrett be our chairman. That Mr. Hendricks be our vice chair. And I will stay secretary.
So you had three officers?
That's all we've ever had.
We don't need a treasurer, don't we?
They were secretary. Unless you're not telling me something.
A little side hustle we got going, right? All right. All right, do we need to, we need to vote on that, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion, is that your motion, ma'am?
That is my motion.
Okay, is there a second? It's been motioned by Ms. Pearson that Mr. Barrett become chairman, myself, Mr. Hendricks vice chairman, and Ms. Pearson will stay the secretary. Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Mr. Farrell, let us vote.
Can we have discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Does anyone else want to be chair?
That would be a negative, sir.
Carry on.
Discussion is denied.
Can I abstain?
Nope. All right, motion carries. And this becomes effective immediately since we're in the, since we're in the year 2021.
I guess it's appropriate that it's an inauguration day.
Yeah, there you go. That report, any other comments from the board at this time?
I have a, I do have a quick, I won't keep us long. I have a request, I don't know how to facilitate it. For the cases that we, that come before us, that, for example, the case we just heard, she has a section of fence that requires action after we denied. Is there a mechanism that we could get a report after ninety days or so to follow up on the cases that might require, like, we've had carports recently that needed to come down? Just to follow up on what happens with those?
We can do that. I've been, I've been in discussions. Mr. Jordan is just out because he came in contact with someone that tested positive. I think he's actually viewing this meeting on Facebook. But we are about to begin doing a lot of follow-up on violations to see if they have been solved, if additional actions need to be done. And all we'll have to do is just add that into this report before you each month.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen, is there a way, while I'm out in February and March, is there a way for me to attend the meetings virtually, or is it not a special exception?
Let us get with you, Ms. Dunn. There are ways, because of medical reasons, that approval can be granted. I don't know if you will qualify for that, so let us get back with you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.